Since it is four o'clock, it's time to call this meeting of the Cochise County Planning Commission to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to read some ground rules first. Welcome to this commission meeting. These are the ground rules. Please turn off cell phones or silence ringers. Also, please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you are attending in person and wish to speak, fill out a speaker information form and give to the planning staff. Forms are on the table next to the door. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. If you are attending online and wish to speak, raise your hand in the team's chat and provide your name, address, and agenda item number you would like to address. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. Please mute your microphone until called. In-person speakers must come to the podium when called by the commission chair. Use the microphone to capture your comments. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities. At least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. Special use dockets are approved by this commission. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Appeals of special use decisions are heard by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county's website. For additional assistance, contact Development Services. Other docket decisions. Dockets other than special use requests result in a recommendation forwarded by this commission to the Board of Supervisors. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote fails. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing. We do observe the following time limits. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for the call to public. The applicant has 10 minutes. Then, three minutes for supporters or those opposed, and this time can be adjusted by the chair. Five minutes for the applicant's rebuttal. Thank you. At this time, we will do roll call. Mr. Limbach?
Present.
Mr. Montgomery?
Present.
Mr. Watkins?
Present.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Fickett?
Present.
Mr. Martzki?
Present.
And Mr. Saunders?
Present.
Chair is present. We do have a quorum. Thank you very much. This is the time we approve the previous month's minutes. Does anyone have any comments or corrections to those minutes? Can I get a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I recommend we approve the minutes of last meeting as mailed.
Thank you. One second. Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote regarding approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Montgomery is aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Watkins? Mr. Gonzalez, did you join us? And Mr. Young, you were absent last month, so no. Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Absent.
The minutes are approved. This is the time for call to public pursuant to Arizona Revive Statute 38-431.01-H. This is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. I do have three forms. Looks like it's all...Deborah Herzog? Are you in the room or online? Ms. Herzog? We'll try you again in a moment. Joan Murphy, are you available? Same for Ms. Murphy. And Ms. Allison Morse, are you online?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, you have three minutes. Ms. Morse?
Can you hear me?
Are we having trouble with...
Ms. Morse, we're having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, Ms. Morse.
Okay. Can you hear me?
That is better.
Okay. I kept getting a message saying I was muted even though I kept pressing star six. Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners, staff, and members of the public. Thank you for this opportunity to share my concerns today. Once again, I'm speaking on behalf of the many residents of McNeil who have expressed opposition to the proposed feedlot on 1,052 acres just south of the town of McNeil on Highway 191. And yes, they are still much more than the special use application has not yet been decided. Last month, I mentioned the many adverse factors that would affect our health and well-being to look for residents and the environment. A public meeting with 14 employees and the turnout was impressive. Thanks to Matthew Taylor for spending part of his Saturday completing the special use application process. The applicant was unaffected by many of our concerns, though he did inform us that the plan was for 400 cows on a 20-acre feedlot and 60 cows on 18 acres. If each cow can produce 100 pounds of manure a day, 450 will produce 23 tons of waste a day. How will this be managed and where will it go? Each cow can easily drink over 30 gallons of water a day, especially during hot weather. That's about 14,000 gallons a day, or almost 10,000 gallons of water. If the applicant were to be granted a special use permit for this relatively small plot, now many fear it would be only a matter of time before it balloons into a much larger operation with many more hundreds or thousands of cows. This would have a devastating effect on human and environmental health, lack proper steps, and deplete the area's diminishing water supply. More appropriate location of the feedlot would be away from residential communities and schoolchildren, not within the vicinity of these. If the matters are come before you, I ask that you consider these factors as you decide what is best for the county and its inhabitants. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. I apologize, I did not read on Deborah Herzog's that she will not be present, but she would like to register her opposition to the McNeil feedlot. And the same for Joan Murphy. She says, "I'm opposed to the contamination of the water, the impact upon the water table, the odors and pests, and the threat of expansion. There is no way this feedlot should be approved." And I thank you all for your comments to public. Is there anyone else I've missed?
Yes. My name is Tommy Bassett, and I spoke with Matthew Taylor, and he said I would be able to speak.
This is call to public, sir, and your subject?
The McNeil feedlot.
Thank you. State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Tommy Bassett. I live in Friends Southwest Center in McNeil, Arizona. And I just want to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to speak about the feedlot. Mr. Ramon Borquez sent out a letter to neighbors of a proposed feedlot in mid-May. Although he has not submitted his formal special use permit request to the Planning and Zoning Board, I want to speak in favor of promoting viable, sustainable, positive economic impact development projects. I am opposed to the feedlot on the two parcels immediately south of McNeil Elementary School and less than a mile away from the whitewater draw wildlife area that Mr. Borquez is proposing. Water usage, contamination, air quality, traffic, and the small number of jobs and tax revenues that this site would generate are but a few of my objections. I am supporting the development of sustainable businesses in public areas that generate employment, positive tax revenues, and community approval and support. I encourage and I want to promote grass-fed cattle husbandry, traditional made-of-crop development and marketing, along with wise stewardship of our water, air quality, and the wonderful border cultures and traditions we enjoy here in Cochise County. I am opposed to antiquated industrial models of agriculture and animal production. Bigger is not always better. I hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission, Cochise County offices, and public members listening to this meeting will recognize innovative and new ideas for economic development versus failed historical approaches. We do not need another feedlot. I want the Planning and Zoning Commission and County Board of Supervisors to proactively help develop sustainable businesses. Let's make our home... Let's make a home for our refugee children, our ex-patriot relatives toiling in Phoenix and Tucson to come back to. Thank you very much for your time. And I am more in support of developing economic viable options than opposing the feedlot. But I do not see the feedlot as an answer to economic development in this part of Cochise County. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett. Is there anyone else for call to public?
Madam Chair, we have Mr. Sturgis on with us as well.
Mr. Sturgis, name and address. You have three minutes, sir.
Yes, I'm Jeff Sturgis. I'm from Sierra Vista. I would like to note that there's an echo for everybody who's speaking, so I don't think it's on my end if I'm echoing. Thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns and to, in the line, learn that especially for a feedlot in the area, where families and residents living in the area along with McNeil Elementary School in the town of McNeil that suffer negative impacts due to such a permanent pandemic. The negative impacts include the swelling, a decrease in property value, pervasive unpleasant odors, contamination of groundwater, surface water runoff, and cattle waste and antibiotics, negative impact on the water level, and increasing dust, increasing lines, and increasing heavy traffic with cattle, and other items being transmitted for the humans who are from the feedlot. Thank you for hearing my other concerns.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Let's move to our first agenda item. This is docket SU 25-10, Caya in Cielo RV Park, applicant Pamela Colabella. This item was tabled by this commission at the June meeting. Therefore, the commission must make a motion, second, and vote to remove from the table before we begin. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move we remove docket SU 25-10 from the table.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martzki. We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Hearing none. This item is up for discussion. Mr. Taylor, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was remiss earlier in not advising you that Mr. Gonzalez will not be joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Did you want a full run-through of the...or a very brief run-through?
Not necessary for me, commissioners. Do you want to hear the whole presentation again? Is there anything new?
All right. Very good. Madam Chair, this is an abbreviated stat presentation of docket SU 25-10, special use request to allow recreational vehicle park. As the commission is aware, you do have print copies that were prepared by Mr. Whitehead with the Deputy County Attorney's Office. He spoke during the hearing back on June 11th that there were some concerns brought up by one of the neighbors involving primary and secondary access to the proposed park. I take it that the commission has had an opportunity to read that opinion. So, the property is located approximately two miles south of Highway 80, near the Babakamari River Basin. Properties and all surrounding properties are zoned RU4, that is state land to the south. The property owners supplied a site plan, a couple of concept plans actually, showing the estimated layout of the park, and a second, more refined layout showing some of the amenities in addition to the spaces. Just a very quick slide on the definition of recreational vehicle parks. Three or more RV sites are permissible in rural districts, although we would prefer those to be...to retain that rural residential ambiance. And 14 development standards for those parks. This is an image viewing to the north, to the northeast, and to the south. And the closest residences are to the left of the screen. And one more, showing the approximate boundary of the park property. As submitted, this application does comply with most of the applicable factors, and there are seven applicable factors to this application. Complies with applicable factors, low-impact rural residential use, support from nearby property owners, and we've also received opposition from a nearby property owner. And the applicant did mail their letters, and staff did execute the public notification process. Staff mailed 21 notices. We received multiple responses, some of whom own multiple properties, as demonstrated on the screen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Ms. Colabella, are you present? Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't look up.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Pamela Colabella. We are here once again to request a special use permit for a small, 12-space boutique RV park located on vacant land directly adjacent to our family property, Caya in Cielo Ranch. This low-impact RV park will only be visible to our family property...excuse me, as it is bordered on the south and west by vacant state lands and is buffered from view by a large hillside to our neighbors north of us. Access to the RV park will come from Highway 82 and travel two miles on the wide and paved road of Sanders, and then turn off on the county road of Caya in Cielo and proceed .3 miles to the RV park entrance on the family's property, Caya in Cielo Ranch. We are not using the access road that runs between our property and our neighbor's property to the north as the entrance to the RV park, which will further buffer any view from the RV park from our neighbors. The Angels, who had opposed last time and are here today, rarely visit their property as they live full-time in Tucson and will not be in view of the RV park when they do visit. A special use permit included in Matthew's presentation was granted back in 1994 to Caya in Cielo Ranch. At that time, requirements for road maintenance width and other restrictions were put in place. Caya in Cielo Ranch has been maintaining those road requirements for the past 30 years and is evidenced in the pictures we had provided to Matthew. We have also provided a statement from County Attorney's Office from 1995 stating that legal access would seem to exist, and there is nothing within the terms of these easements which would prohibit their use by customers or invitees of the landowner. The county attorney at the time also stated that the scope of these property rights is not a county issue and would be between the Serbian estates, the Angels, and Caya in Cielo Ranch, the dominant estate, for purposes of the easement. Caya in Cielo Ranch has granted us easement access through their property for this RV park. We are asking for this special use permit for this low-impact RV park so that we can continue our stewardship of the land and be sustainably closer to our aging family members who have been on the property for generations, and so that our future generations can do the same. We are bringing awareness to conservation efforts regarding desert ecosystems and educating the public about our beautiful lands by catering to nature lovers and bird watchers. Thank you for your time and consideration on this small project, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is time for public input. I do have one request to speak. Ms. Eleanor Angel, are you present?
Diane. Can you hear me?
Thank you. State your address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my address is 2148 Caya in Cielo. My husband and I strongly oppose allowing a commercial use in this beautiful, uniquely beautiful riparian area. We are the only independent neighbors, not related to the applicants, whose property actually borders the proposed RV site. Slide 2, please. And we will suffer major impact from the heavy volume of large vehicle traffic through private easements on our land, making a sharp corner in front of our gate. Wachukah City has a good number of RV parks with immediate access from a county paved road, none of which require traveling from public roads through a neighborhood of private easements. The proposed RV park cannot be reached except by crossing the Babakamari River, which becomes impassable at times of heavy rainfall and flooding. Slide 3, please. You have to take seriously a river fed by nearly 300 square miles of catchment area. When we first bought our house on Ancielo in 1997, our neighbor across the Babakamari was Mary Diamond. Her family looked after the bridge. She was a keen environmentalist. After her death, the new owner destroyed the bridge and installed a narrow culvert pipe. Slide 4, please. And had concrete cord to make a 10-foot-wide crossing. The Cochise floodplain administrator was not informed before work began, and he told the owner he needed to apply for a permit from them and also from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. There is no record of a permit being granted by the Army Corps. The only public crossings in this area that are recognized by the engineers are upstream at Wilcox Road and downstream at Bowser Road. The staff presentation last month included a visual of the proposed site. Slide 5, please, provided by the owners. They have given it a new name, RV Pot and Nature Preserve. Calling it Nature Preserve does not make it so. And the contour map, slide 6, please, shows this site, though not flat, is certainly not a valley surrounded by hills. In fact, the large proposed clubhouse would be on a hill shared with our land to the north and directly across the river from our house. I hope you can see there the Caya in Cielo that we superimposed on this map. Slide 7 details the destruction of natural habitat in an area that drains to the Babakamari. Vegetation has been removed, and the area is now subject to topsoil erosion from wind and rain with the most extensive scraping immediately adjacent our land to the north. We also remain concerned about the plan to drill a well to serve the RV community. We have seen lowering of the water table in recent years, with once year-round pools and ponds now all gone.
Ms. Angel?
We're out of time.
Your time is evaporated.
Yes. So, thank you very much. There is good reason that RV parks have access from public roads, and visitors need not travel through private easements across unapproved culverts, and we ask this body to deny the request.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else online that would like to speak to this matter? Is there anyone in the room?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have Deborah Chatham.
Are you online, Ms. Chatham?
Yes, ma'am.
You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
My name is Deborah Chatham, and I live at 7835 East Kansas Drive. I actually have no skin in this game. I don't know any of these people, and I'm sure they're quite lovely, all of them. But I thought that there was going to be an RV park right here. Honestly, a little bit shocked because it never crossed that waterfall. And it was frightening. I had no idea how deep it was. It was running water. There was another vehicle coming towards me, and I cannot even imagine our viewpoint across that area. As an avid birder, I would love nothing more than to plant myself there in an RV park and watch birds. But I really think this is not the place for that. I just wanted to put that in there. I couldn't really see because I have no skin in my teeth. But I thought I was appropriate, and I appreciate the concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Taylor?
We have Mr. Larson online. Sir, please unmute yourself if you haven't already.
I have. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. I spoke last time. My name's Corey Larson. I'm an attorney here in Tucson, Arizona. I do represent the Angels. I just wanted to speak to an issue. I did not receive the memo that was referred to from the Cochise County Attorney. But I think if I can hit on the issue of there being a RV park two miles off of a public road that travels through narrow public easements and over a culvert that is...passes over what is sometimes, and I agree, not all the time, but sometimes when it's raining, a very running river, is that it's just not a good idea from a Planning and Zoning Commission standpoint to be approving a RV park that goes through a private rural neighborhood. I think what we can say is if we can all think about RV parks that we might have seen, experienced, been to, or are aware of, there probably isn't one you can think of that is...does not have access from a existing public road, and for good reason. You have RVers who are traveling, you know, weekend warriors sometimes called, who are traveling, and they ought to be able to get where they're going from publicly available roads, not going through miles of narrow easements over bridges with sometimes running rivers through what are private residential easements and neighborhoods. This is just not a good location for this park, of which there are many other available in Wachukah City that are off...that are adjacent to and accessed from public roads. This project would be in a private rural neighborhood, only be able to be accessed across private residential easements and going over what Ms. Angel would...has researched and told you is an unapproved box culvert bridge anyway. It's not a good fit for a residential riparian area. And that's among the other reasons, from even just a legal standpoint, but also from a standpoint of what this commission should be considered, it's an ill fit to have a RV park. You have to go through miles of private easements and narrow roads and over rivers to get to. It's not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak up?
Mr. Sturgis, you have your hand up. Did you want to speak on this item?
No, thank you. I'll lower my hand if I can figure out how to do that.
This is the time for the applicant's response. Do you want to comment on what you've heard?
Yes. So, Mary Diamond is the one who had initially requested the special use permit... So, Mary Diamond is the one who had initially requested the special use permit back in 1994. She operated the grandmother's council, and she had invitees of up to 38 guests that were part of events that happened twice per year, and she also had consistent guests of 15 that were allotted on that special use permit. It is my thought that she probably had opposition from Eleanor at the time, and that's why she had gotten the county attorney's opinion on the easements at that time. The bridge that is there is still within the parameters of the requirements that were in place in 1994 and the restrictions. It currently handles the water flow. There is no flooding that happens for longer. There's no prolonged flooding. If it does flood, it's not for longer than a couple hours. We have lived on the ranch, so we've seen that ourselves. The impact, the most that are impacted are residents ourselves, the Caya N. Cielo Ranch. We are at the end of that ranch, and again, the Angels do not even live on that property. They live full-time in Tucson and may visit maybe two times per year, so they are not the ones that are impacted. We are the ones that are impacted by any kind of flooding. Also, RV parks are seasonal. The majority of people that come down to Cochise County for RVing are snowbirds. They come October through May at the longest. Usually, they'll leave by the end of February or March, so the flooding is not going to be happening during the time period when most visitors will be happening or will be coming. Also, RV parks typically have an occupancy rate of 50% to 80%. That's six to 10 RVs. 12 would be the max that we are asking for on that. Let's see what else. And also, it is not miles of winding road on private easements. It's Sanders Road, which is a public road. It's paved. It's wide. When you turn off on Caya N. Cielo, it's only a third of a mile to get to Caya N. Cielo Ranch, which is our family property, and that is where the entrance will be. So, most people would be traveling over that bridge for just a minute or so just to get there. And currently, there are semis that go there. There's delivery trucks such as Amazon delivery trucks. We've had fire trucks go through there. And again, we are the only ones that are impacted by that travel, specifically because the Angels do not live in Wachukka City. They live in Tucson, and we are the full-time residents there. And that is all I have to say.
Thank you. I'll now close the public hearing. This is the time for commission discussion. Questions of the applicant or staff?
I do one question.
Mr. Saunders?
Is this intended to be just a RV so they'll come in, stay a few days, and then leave, or is it going to be more long-term?
It really depends on the person that's visiting. We'd be open to both. If we did have long-term RVers, then we would have a month-to-month agreement and be able to, for lack of a better word, kick them out anytime that we needed to. So, it really just depends on what is going to be happening. Typically, it would be snowbirds that would stay a little bit longer, but I'm sure that people would want to visit just to at least check out the area.
So, is it your plan to have sewer water and electric at each site?
Yes. And we do plan to have a water tank, a 30,000-gallon water tank, to supplement any type of water that might be used. RVs are low-flow anyway, and currently, we have a well on Caya N. Cielo Ranch that has never run dry, but we do plan to supplement the water just in case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a follow-up question? Will you and your marketing encourage long-term stays since that could reduce the impact?
Depends, I guess, on what the Planning and Zoning Commission would like us to do. We're open to both. I will be the one that's marketing for it, so if you guys would prefer that it be long-term, then that's what we'll go for. But if you prefer that it would be short-term, then we can certainly go towards that as well. I believe a lot of people that do visit the area, again, are snowbirds from maybe Canada or Minnesota that would like to stay the October-through-March timeframe, which would lessen the impact that happens on the roads. But if that's not something that the Planning and Zoning Commission would like, then we can certainly amend that. We're very open to working with the county on any restrictions that you guys would like in place.
Rather than a condition, I think that was more of a question of mine and probably advisable under the circumstances.
To have long-term?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just thinking out loud. Anyone else?
I'll just quickly note something. The word neighborhood has been used a couple of times. I question the use of that description by looking at the rural nature of this.
I don't know where.
It could be loosely described as a neighborhood, but I don't think of it that way myself. It's pretty rural. I know this area personally, by the way, and the applicant has done a good job, I think, in providing history back to 1994 with usage in a nearby area. And so, this is not unprecedented, in my view. And as far as all the factors of compliance, they are all in compliance. And I think our only issue was with who actually owned the road, wasn't it? Have any reason or liberty to discuss that, Chairman? I don't need to.
I do not have any questions about the road. I think we've...
Okay. Then I'm good. Thank you.
You're sure?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Anyone else? Mr. Limbach, anything online?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, then. This is the time for Mr. Taylor's summary and recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, based on the factors in favor, staff recommends approval of docket SU-2510 to allow recreational vehicle park with the following conditions. The RV park is limited to 12 spaces. Quiet hours shall be observed between 8:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. seven days per week. Park areas are kept in a sanitary condition to prevent attracting wildlife or pests. Road access and internal driveway shall be treated with two-inch gravel or other stabilizing material to reduce dust. Perimeter open space shall be retained, and existing vegetation shall be replaced and supplemented with new drought-tolerant vegetation as needed. The standard conditions relative to permitting and timeframes and modifications have not been altered by this application request. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is, we have a motion to approve Special Use 25-10, Caya N. Cielo RV Park. Is there any further conversation from the commission? And I call for the vote. Mr. Limbach?
Point of order, Madam Chair. I think we had a vote to untable the item.
Yes.
If we could do a separate motion to approve this.
Oh, yes, thank you. Can you throw that screen up, Mr. Taylor? Thank you. So, I do. I call for a motion, please, to approve.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Martzki?
I've moved to approve docket SU-2510 with condition of approval recommended by staff. Factors in favor of approval constitute findings of fact.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Fickett. Now that we're in order, I think I'll call for the vote. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, to approve.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
And Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It is unanimous then. This item passes. Any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors, excuse me, within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday or online at cochise.AZ.gov. Congratulations, and thank you. Move on to item number two, rezoning 25-03, Sun Sites Unit 2 on Towner Street. The applicant is requesting neighborhood business and SR-43 be converted to SR-174. Applicant is Mr. Jeff Thede. I think we have Mr. Thede online. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
We will be making a motion. This is a departure from our normal procedure. We want to become in conformity with the Board of Supervisors, so we will be making our motions at this time. Can I get that motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ-25-03 to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions, rezoning tax parcel 117-05-054B from SR-43 and NB to SR-174. The factors of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Second? Thank you, Mr. Martzki. Mr. Taylor, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ-2503. An applicant initiated rezoning request to downzone property from SR-43 and NB to SR-174. The applicant is Jeff Thede. The property is located in Sun Sites 2. That would be APN 11705054B. Again, the proposed zoning district is SR-174. It is located within Growth Area D, rural areas. The property is undeveloped, and the applicant wishes to develop a single-family residence using the county's owner-builder opt-out program. Property is located, again, in Sun Sites Number 2, about five miles west of Highway We've had several dockets in Sun Sites recently, so the commission should not be totally foreign to this map. Numerous parcels, most of Sun Sites is on SR-43 with pockets of NB that was added sometime This is the property, some drone images here. This would be viewing to the north. This is viewing east. This is viewing to the west, showing the relatively undeveloped, certainly a rural residential character of the area with the closest dwelling unit being in the lower right-hand corner of the screen. The applicant has provided a site plan showing his proposed development of the site. Again, he wishes to develop it for rural residential use, using the owner-builder Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning requests. Nine factors are applicable to this rezon. The request does comply with all applicable factors. The development of the property would be consistent with the residential growth pattern. Also, the downzone would reduce the number of allowed principal dwellings, and staff has not identified any factors not in favor. Staff executed the public notification process between 13 and 18 June. Staff did mail 29 notices and did not receive any responses in favor or opposition. This item has come before the commission previously as an RU4 request, twice. Both times, the commission recommended denial. The second time, it did make it to the Board of Supervisors, which did not approve the rezon to RU4. Mr. Thede refiled and held his application until the subsequent text amendment change that was approved by the Board of Supervisors during the most recent meeting to allow accessory structures to be built in the SR-174 district prior to and larger than the principal structure, which was the key reason that Mr. Thede was requesting RU4 in the first place. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ-2503. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you.
And thank you. Mr. Thede, you have 10 minutes. Please state your address before you speak.
Yes, Madam Chair. I live in Sun Sites, 85625, my zip code on 113 Chad Lane in Pierce. If there is no opposition, I don't want to waste anybody's time. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Thede. Well said. Could you please tell me what that strange depression is there on your property?
Excellent question.
It looks gray and white. I've not seen that.
It's a stock tank.
Did you gather water for stock?
Matthew? Oh, is that at the north edge of the property?
Yes.
Yes. That is a, we call it a tank or a Texas tank or a stock pump.
Yeah.
I, yes, that's, yes, that's, I don't own that. That is across the road from my property.
Well, thank you very much. This is the time for public comment. Is there anyone online or in the room? Hearing none, as we said. We'll let Mr. Thede recuse his time. And the public hearing, thank you, and the public hearing is then closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Any questions of the applicant or staff? Hearing none. Mr. Taylor, your recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, based on the factors in favor, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ-25-03 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Has anyone thought of anything they wanted to ask or say? Then this is the time to call for the vote. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ma'am, do you need a motion?
No, we made one at the beginning. That's the different feel. We're, thank you. Thank you, though. Mr. Montgomery, what is your vote?
My vote is aye to approve.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Thede. Finally, this is motion is approved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this docket. The next item is RZ-25-05, also in Sun Sites on Pierce Road. Applicant requests rezoning neighborhood business to SR-174. Applicants James and Pamela Mercer. Are you present?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will be calling for the motion at this time. Mr. Martzki?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ-25-05 to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions, rezoning tax parcel 115-10323 from neighborhood business to SR-174. Factors of approval constitute the findings of fact.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Taylor, your planning director's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ-2505. An applicant initiated rezoning request to downzone property from neighborhood business to single-household residential with a four-acre minimum parcel size. Applicants are James and Pamela Mercer. The property is located in Sun Sites 2, 11510323. Proposed zoning is SR-174. The property is located within Growth Area D, rural areas. And again, the applicant wishes to develop the site with single-family residents. Property is located in Sun Sites Unit 2, approximately four miles west of Highway 191. And again, the property is located within multiple parcels zoned SR. The RU zoning to the southeast would is a remnant zoning district that was not part of the Sun Sites development, and the applicant's property was zoned neighborhood business sometime in the 1970s and has remained undeveloped. There's some drone images. This would be viewing more or less to the northwest. This image would be viewing to the west, towards the west, towards the mountains, and viewing to the east. The applicant has provided a concept plan showing his desired development of the site for residential use. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning requests. Nine factors are applicable to this downzone. The request complies with all applicable factors. The future development would be compatible with the residential growth pattern, and the downzone from business to residential district is an appropriate change in this area. Staff has not identified any factors not in favor. Staff executed the public notification process between 13 and 18 June. Staff mailed 31 notices to property owners, receiving one response from an adjacent property And Madam Chair, and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ-2505. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now open. This is the time for the applicant's statement. I'm sorry, I reversed the order. It's time for the applicant's statement.
I have nothing to add.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. So, the public hearing is open. I have one form. I just have to read this. I've never seen this before. A Mr. Jeff Kritzer offers his support, and his reason is to be nice.
I thought that was really nice.
Never seen it. Had to read it into the record. Is there anyone... Is there anyone else online or in the room that wants to address this matter? Hearing none, are you waiving your response time?
Yes.
Thank you so much. The public hearing is closed. This is the time for commission discussion, questions of the applicant or staff. I do have one question, Mr. Taylor. Right-of-way permitting will address protecting road edges on Pierce?
That is correct, Madam Chair. Whichever roadway, I believe it's Pierce Road, they will be taking access from that. Pierce Road is not an improved road, so I don't know that a right-of-way permit would be required to harden it for a hardened neighborhood.
Oh, I thought I saw one that was paved. Maybe I, oh, maybe I was thinking of Wilcox Road. Thank you. And I did have one other question regarding shipping containers. Does the county have any regulations permitting requirements for shipping containers? How many can you place?
If they're used for dwelling, they just have building code, and there is no limit on numbers for accessory if they're for nonliving.
Do they need to get a permit for that, those accessories?
Yes.
Okay. So they need to rectify that situation on this property? Thank you. Anyone else?
As well as trade permits, Madam Chair, if there's any utilities or anything like that.
Thank you. Hearing no further questions, Mr. Taylor, your summary and recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor, staff recommends approval, excuse me, forwarding docket RZ2405 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The motion is made and seconded. I now call for the question. Mr. Saunders, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Martzki?
Yes.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Then Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimously approved. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this docket. Moving on, docket RZ25-06, Puzzy Ranch Road. Applicant requests rezoning RU4 to RU2. Applicant is Daniel Barnett. Are you with us?
I am via the phone, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I now call for the motion on this matter.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Martzki?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ25-06 to the Board of Supervisors without special condition, rezoning tax parcel 408-10-015 from RU4 to RU2. Factors in favor of who constitute the findings of fact.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Mr. Taylor, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ2506. An applicant initiated rezoning request to rezon from RU4 to RU2. The applicant is Daniel Barnett. Property is located on Puzzy Ranch Road. This would be just east of James Ranch Road, APN 40810015. Again, the proposed zoning is RU2. That is consistent with the comp plan designations of developing as well as community growth areas. Property is currently undeveloped. Future use is undetermined. Property is located west of Douglas, about one-half mile south of Highway 80. And the property is currently surrounded by multiple undeveloped parcels, also with rural zoning. The commission would recognize that this is not too far north of the proposed location of the new commercial port of entry. You drone images, this one would be viewing north and northwest with Highway 80 in the Viewing to the west. This is Puzzy Ranch Road viewing west, and it should be noted that there's a major gas easement and gas pipeline in the vicinity of Puzzy Ranch Road. And one last image viewing to the east, and that would be the border patrol facility off to the left. The applicant intends to subdivide the property. It's, I believe it's part of inheritance, but I'll allow the applicant to explain that. There's really no concept plan, per se. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning requests. In this case, nine factors are applicable to this down, excuse me, this upzone. The request does comply with eight applicable factors. If the property is developed for residential land use, that would be compatible with the existing rural development pattern. This property may not access a public roadway in the future based on some of the infrastructure improvements with the port. Primarily, it'll be James Ranch Road and King's Highway with an intermediate industrial road that actually runs to the south of this parcel. So it may require some sort of an easement in the future, an agreement with an adjacent property owner for access over to James Ranch Road. The other concern would be potential incompatibility with future commercial industrial land uses associated with the new port of entry. The applicant did mail letters out on the 9th of May, and staff executed the public notification process between 13 and 18 June. And staff did mail 11 notices, and we did not receive any responses in favor or opposition. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ2506, and we are available for your questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Mr. Barnett, would you state your name and address? And you have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Daniel Barnett. My address is 3167 West Citrus Road, Biston, Arizona. This was land that my mother had, and I'm her trustee, and per her will, was then to divide this along for children, and we have not been able to do that with the zoning of RU4. So we're just asking to zone it, upzone it to RU2, so that I can therefore divide it among my siblings, as per her will. I know it's kind of against the norm in the next two dockets you'll see that going to light industry, but this is all just because we're trying to divide the land among my siblings so that we can get our inheritance from my mother as she wanted per her will. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. I call for comments from other persons, either online or in the room. I have no papers. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Hearing none. Mr. Barnett, I trust you'll waive your right to rebut?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Public portion is closed. The commission can ask questions of the applicant or staff at this time. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, your summary and recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ2506 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have the motion. I'd like to now call, and a second, I'd like to call for the question, please. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Almost missed you. It is unanimous. Mr. Barnett, you have our approval. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of that approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with the docket. Our next item is RZ2507, James Ranch Road Industrial. Applicant is requesting RU4 to LI, Light Industrial. The applicant is Tactical Holdings. Mr. Hardee Chira, you'll have to tell me how to say your name, sir.
Hardee Chira.
Chira, thank you, and you're in the room. This is the time for the motion. Could I get that read, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Martzki?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ2507 to the Board of Supervisors with the special condition recommended by staff, rezoning tax parcel 40834-005 Charlie from RU4 to Light Industrial. Factors in favor of who constitute the findings of fact.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Mr. Taylor, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ2507. An applicant initiated rezoning request to rezon property from RU4 to Light Industrial. The applicant, again, is Tactical Holdings. This property is located on the east side of James Ranch Road, approximately three-quarters of a mile south of Highway 80, tax parcel 40834005C. Again, the request is to light industry. The property is currently undeveloped, and the proposed use of the property, should the zoning be approved, is warehousing and storage uses, and those would be intended to support commerce-related activities associated with the new port of entry. Property is located west of Douglas, about three-quarter mile south of Highway 80, again, just north of the new commercial port of entry. This graphic shows the location of the property. This is due west of the previous docket the commission saw back in May, which was a similar rezon request. That one was about 369 acres, so this property is contiguous with it. The graphic does show the approximate location of the port of entry, as well as an additional parcel owned by the applicant, which will be heard separately after this docket. This slide was included with the previous rezoning. I just went ahead and left it in for folks that may not really have that much information on the board. There's a couple of good links there for some information, and again, the intent is to create some regional warehousing and storage uses. The applicant has provided a site plan showing future development of the site, again, for warehousing and storage uses, and you can see that they're directly northeast of the proposed port of entry site. This is an exhibit that would show the required dedications. As with the previous rezon, we are requiring dedications to make sure we get those roadways. James Ranch Road is going to be a major thoroughfare up from the border, so we're asking for a right-of-way dedication along the east side of that for this parcel. A few drawn images, this one would be looking to the southeast. This is viewing due east. The border patrol facility would be to the left of the screen. And this one is viewing to the north, showing the property and that the existing, I guess you could say, condition or alignment of James Ranch Road up to Highway 80. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning requests. 14 factors are applicable to this downzone, and the development will be required to comply with all of those factors through permitting. Staff finds that the request does comply with all applicable factors. There are very few residences nearby. Unlike the previous case, we don't have any adjacent residences to this parcel. We do have a close parcel on the other side of James Ranch Road where there is a residence, but no adjacent residences. If approved, it would allow land uses that support the new port of entry. This property would contribute to a potential new employment center in the port area. We did receive a favorable response from an adjacent property owner, and staff has not identified any factors not in favor. The applicant mailed letters as required by the zoning regulations on 22 April, and staff executed the notification process between 8 and 13 June. Staff mailed 12 notices, receiving one response in favor. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ2507. We are available for the commission's questions, and as you're aware, Madam Chair, the applicant is in the room.
Thank you. Mr. Chira, you have 10 minutes. State your name and address before you speak.
Good evening. My name is Robert Maloney. I'm a consultant for Tactical Holdings LOC, and Mr. Chira has asked me to speak for him, if that's okay with the committee.
That's fine. What is your address, sir?
It is 5807 South Boulder Place, Hurford, Arizona, with offices in Sierra Vista at 77 Kai Portal, Suite C140, Sierra Vista. Thank you. Mr. Chira, Tactical Holdings owns a property approximately 517 acres in the area and is asking to rezon this 90.6 acres, as indicated by the staff, to create Light Industrial. Current access through James Ranch Road, and the developer will cooperate with ADOT in the right-of-ways needed for their new connector road. It's pretty self-explanatory. The developer wants to take advantage of the new commercial port of entry, create warehousing and storage as market conditions allows for the build-out. There's also an additional rezoning on the docket that the property owner has to the west side of James Ranch Road. That's really all I have to say, and I'm available for questions as needed.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing is open. This is the time for comments from other persons, for or against. I have no forms. Is there anyone in the room or online that wishes to speak? Hearing none. I'm presuming you want to waive your response time? Thank you so much. Public hearing then is closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant or our staff?
Not today.
None? Hearing none. I just have one for my own knowledge. Is James Ranch Road going to be fully dedicated at 200 feet width?
It might even be wider at this point. Yeah, they're still studying it.
So that's the goal, and we're trying to make that happen. Good. Thank you so much. Mr. Taylor, your summary and recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ2507 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval with the following special condition: right-of-way dedication along James Ranch Road per exhibits, and the exhibit was included in this PowerPoint as well as included with the staff report, and will be attached to the ordinance if approved by the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I would like to now call for the vote. Mr. Saunders, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Congratulations. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this docket. Moving on, similar, RZ25-08, also on James Ranch Road, RU4 to LI. The applicant, again, is Tactical Holdings. I'd like to call for the motion at this time.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Martzki?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ2508 to the Board of Supervisors with special condition recommended by staff, rezoning tax parcel 40768-007 Alpha, 008 Bravo, 010, and 013 Alpha, Echo, from RU4 to Light Industrial. Factors in favor of who constitute the findings of fact.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Fickett. Mr. Taylor, your planning director's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ2508. A rezoning request to rezon property from RU4 to Light Industrial. Again, the applicant is Tactical Holdings. The property is located at the approximate southwest corner of Highway 80 and James Ranch Road, encompassing 40768, 007 Alpha, 008 Bravo, 010, and 013 Echo. Zoning amendment is to light industry. The property is currently undeveloped. The proposed uses are warehouse and storage, along with a truck stop at the intersection of James Ranch Road and Highway 80. And the property is located west of Douglas, at the southwest corner of Highway 80 and James Ranch Road. James Ranch Road, north of the new commercial port of entry. The zoning map shows the approximate location, so this would be at the intersection. And again, the previous item that was heard by the commission and approved by the Board of Supervisors is to the lower right-hand quarter and purple, the RZ 2504, with the other property that we just heard immediately to the west. Again, we're including this slide, just as a summary slide for more information. These parcels total approximately 116 acres, again, five miles west of the existing port, creating warehouse and storage uses, and again, with the proposed truck stop at the The applicant has provided a site plan showing those uses on those parcels, those four parcels that total those 116 acres. And this is an exhibit with a blow-up on the left-hand side specific to these properties. With some drawn images here, this would be viewing to the southwest, viewing to the west, and viewing to the northwest. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning requests. 14 factors are applicable to this downzone, and again, through the permitting process, all of these factors will be validated in permitting. Factors in favor of this application: the request does comply with all applicable factors. There are no adjacent residential uses to these parcels. If rezoned, this would allow land uses and support the new port, also contributing to a potential new employment center. Commercial uses, such as truck stops, are most appropriate along highways and at major intersections, and staff did not receive any opposition to this docket. Staff has not identified any factors not in favor. The applicant mailed letters as required by the zoning regulations on 22 April, and staff executed the public notification process between 8:00 and 13:00 June. Staff did mail 56 notices for this docket and did not receive any responses in favor or opposition. I did get a couple of phone calls from property owners who have land in, I guess we could call it, an antiquated subdivision to the north of Highway 80, just wanting to know what was going on, but they weren't in favor or opposition. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ 2508. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Would you like to tell us your plans for this property?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Robert Maloney, consultant for Tactical Holdings LLC, same address, 5807 South Boulder Place, Hereford, Arizona, office located at 77 Kai Portals, Suite C140, Sierra Vista, Arizona. The applicant is proposing to rezone 115.54 acres out of their approximately 517 acres. The use will be the similar as the last zoning application, except there will be a truck stop located at the intersection of James Ranch Road and the highway. The applicant is currently in communication with ADOT, and we've hired a traffic engineer to study a new curb cut slash intersection, one-half mile to the west of the current James Ranch Road. The developer will be using the existing right-of-ways that are in position already to develop the site and cooperate, obviously, with the ADOT in the development of their connector road. That's about all I have to say, and I'll be happy to answer any questions for the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. The public portion is now open. Is there anyone online or in the room that wishes to speak to this matter? Hearing done. We'll assume the applicant waives their right to rebuttal.
Yes, ma'am.
Public hearing is then closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Any questions for the applicant or staff?
I have a question.
Mr. Watkins?
Um, is the applicant in the process of acquiring other properties that they're going to come into here and want rezoning on?
As stated, the applicant currently owns 517 acres. The property is located, the balance of the property that's not being considered for rezoning, he has 90 acres on the east side of James Ranch Road. The balance is on the west side. The remaining property that's not being rezoned, as it's a large parcel, and market conditions only allow so much development, probably a 20-year, as analyzing the port in San Luis and O'Gallus, we've estimated this is an appropriate start to the rezoning and development process. But no, the developer may acquire more properties if they become available, but we feel this is a nice start for a long-term light industrial and truck stop location. Thank you.
Hearing none. Mr. Taylor, your summary and recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ 2508 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval with the following condition, and that would be the same condition as a previous docket, for right-of-way dedications along James Ranch Road per the provided exhibits. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission? Let's move to vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
This is the future in that area, and it is now, and so I vote to approve. Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Martzky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Again, it is unanimous. Congratulations. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this docket. Thank you. Does anyone want a break? Three minutes? Nothing?
No.
Yes, let's take a three-minute break, just to stretch if nothing else. Meeting is adjourned for three minutes.
I, uh, if I can ask, why, uh, did you mad at the thing that I very quickly had? Because it's coming. So. It's working the board. Sure. Right. Big needs. Double times. Don't go back there. I'm sorry. Mr. Watkins is still absent. We'll hold on a moment.
Mr. Limbach, are you still with us?
I am, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're reconvening. The next docket item is SU 25-13, Waters Road, hay sales. The applicants are Nicole Gaskell-Hall and Luke Webb. Are you present? Thank you so much. This is the time we call for the motion with a second.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Martzky.
I move to approve docket SU 25-13 with conditions of approval recommended by staff. Factors in favor of approval constitute the findings in fact.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Mr. Taylor, the planning director's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket SU 2513, a special use authorization request to allow retail hay sales. Again, both the applicants are Nicole Gaskell-Hall and Luke Webb. The property is located 10616 East Waters Road. The property is 10442011, zoned RU4, designated in growth area D, rural areas. There is a single-family residence on the property as well that the applicants live Property is located approximately 11, well, it's not 11 miles west of Wilcox, that's for sure. It's located in Palominas on Waters Road. Property is located in an area with an established rural residential development pattern that is close to agricultural uses and about state land. The applicants have provided a site plan showing the approximate location of the business activities. Those activities are more or less limited to the northwest corner of the property, and there is a secondary access that is used to support those activities. This is viewing south with the property highlighted, and a closer image, also viewing to the south. This would be viewing to the north with Waters Road in the background. Also viewing north, showing the residence to the right, as well as the hay storage areas to the left, and that's where also the vehicles and trailers would be parked. Little bit different angle of the site, showing the access, that it has an independent access from the residence, although I believe the same access is used for both uses, with direct access onto Waters Road. Little bit different view, and the closest residence would be at the top of the screen towards the left. This is a photo of the entrance with Waters Road in the foreground. This is Waters Road viewing west and viewing east towards the San Pedro River. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors to evaluate special use requests. Eight factors apply to this application. As proposed, the request complies with most applicable factors. The use does supply local farmers and ranchers, and the application has received support from nearby property owners, including adjacent property owners. Factors not in favor, we do have an adjacent property owner who is not in favor of this application, which led to a subsequent code action, which was followed by the special use application. So the business activity did result in a neighbor complaint, as well as a code compliance action. The applicant did mail letters as required by the zoning regulations on 5 May, and staff executed the public notification process 8 to 13 June. Staff mailed 18 notices, receiving four responses in favor and one in opposition. Staff also received a response from a property owner outside the notification area, which the commission has a copy of that notice, which was provided to our office yesterday from Mr. Dome. The applicant also provided 10 letters in support from property and customers outside the notification area. The commission also has a copy of a letter dropped off from Mr. Gillum, who resides at the property with the red X, due west of this property, and Mr. Gillum supplied several photos with his letter. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 2513, a special use authorization request to allow retail hay sales. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Please state name and address. You have 10 minutes.
Hello, my name is Nicole Webb now. I need to add that to my list of things to do to get the name changed on the property, and this is my husband, Luke.
I'm Luke Webb. Nice to meet you guys.
We are located at 10616 East Waters Road, Hereford, Arizona, 85615. Sweet, ready? So today, our objectives are: explain the nature and scope of the proposed hay sales activities on the property; demonstrate consistency with rural land use guidelines; address traffic, noise, lighting, and environmental considerations; highlight community and agricultural benefits; and outline commitments to responsible, low-impact land use. So this is our operation summary. I am only one person. My husband has his own job to handle. I handle everything that happens at the property. Most of what I do is hay deliveries, so that's what we have the equipment for. I load it up on a trailer, and I take it to you. Of course, people like to pay for that, and they don't have to lift 120-pound bales. So there is no public access. I handle all the scheduling, and the gates at the property are locked. It is not "come as you please, in and out, left and right." It is, you schedule a time. If I'm available, we set that up, and we get you handled. But like I said, most of what I do is deliveries. I gave an average, there's possibly three pickups a day, sometimes even less. Saturdays, of course, I reserve to stay home. I do have my daughter, as you can hear her screaming outside, not anymore. So I try to have at least one day where I can be at my house and be a mom 24/7. So a majority of our hay sales goes to local people that own horses or cattle ranchers. This reduces overgrazing on the property. It's a very important thing. I don't remember what the amount of head per acreage it is in Cochise County anymore, but it used to be like 20 acres per head. It might be even more with the drought that's going on. So we're trying to maintain the compatibility with the rural properties and use our property This kind of goes over what I just talked about. Like I said, most of them are delivered. I load it up on a trailer, I drive off the property, and I take it to you. No public access, all appointment only. I try to maintain within reasonable hours. Again, I have a one-year-old, so I'm not going to be up at 3 o'clock in the morning doing stuff. I like to have reasonable business hours within the timeframe of daylight hours, 8 to 5, and on Saturdays, 8 to 3, because maybe I want to go eat dinner with my husband. Like I said, the gates are always locked. There is not a time, unless I am outside, right there, those gates are locked. So if you want to tap it again, Matthew, I think the picture will pop up. There we go. So we have two pieces of equipment. It's a Case 570 with a gannon on it, and I put some hay spears on it, because I physically cannot lift a 1,000-pound bale of hay. So those are used to move mass quantities of hay.
activities on the property, demonstrate consistency with rural land use guidelines, address traffic, noise, lighting, and environmental considerations, highlight community and agricultural benefits, and outline commitments to responsible, low-impact land use. So this is our operation summary. I am only one person. My husband has his own job to handle. I handle everything that happens at the property. Most of what I do is hay deliveries, so that's what we have the equipment for. I load it up on a trailer, and I take it to you. Of course, people like to pay for that, and they don't have to lift 120-pound bales. So there is no public access. I handle all the scheduling, and the gates at the property are locked. It is not come-as-you-please in and out, left and right. It is you schedule a time. If I'm available, we set that up, and we get you handled. But like I said, most of what I do is deliveries. I gave an average, there's possibly three pickups a day, sometimes even less. Saturdays, of course, I reserve to stay home. I do have my daughter, as you can hear her screaming outside, not anymore. So I try to have at least one day where I can be at my house and be a mom 24/7. So a majority of our hay sales goes to local people that own horses or cattle ranchers. This reduces overgrazing on the property. It's a very important thing. I don't remember what the amount of head per acreage it is in Cochise County anymore, but it used to be like 20 acres per head. It might be even more with the drought that's going on. So we're trying to maintain the compatibility with the rural properties and use our property This kind of goes over what I just talked about. Like I said, most of them are delivered. I load it up on a trailer, I drive off the property, and I take it to you. No public access, all appointment only. I try to maintain within reasonable hours. Again, I have a one-year-old, so I'm not going to be up at 3:00 in the morning doing stuff. I like to have reasonable business hours within the timeframe of daylight hours, 8 to 5:00, and on Saturdays, 8 to 3:00, because maybe I want to go eat dinner with my husband. Like I said, the gates are always locked. There is not a time, unless I am outside, right there, those gates are locked. So if you want to tap it again, Matthew, I think the picture will pop up. There we go. So we have two pieces of equipment. It's a Case 570 with a gannon on it, and I put some hay spears on it, because I physically cannot lift a 1,000-pound bale of hay. So those are used to move mass quantities of hay or large amounts, which is not mass quantities, but it's only as needed. Like I said, I'm just not physically capable of lifting up a six-string bale of hay by hand, so this allows me to place it in the back of vehicles or put it on a trailer and take it off the property. I can push them off the trailer, but no go where they drop off at. Good luck on that one. So the average time for us to unload the semi with our yard squeeze is approximately 30 minutes, give or take that everything goes properly and nothing breaks, which happens a lot, because we work on it constantly. We are going to be working on some sound mitigation measures. At this time, we have talked with Matthew about a few different circumstances and things that we'll be implementing in the future, but for right now, we have spoken with him about getting something started that's not permanent.
Next one.
This just goes over the decibels or the noise amount that each make. So the yard squeeze has an inline-six engine. If you know anything about engines, that's a wee feller, but it gets the job done. So at a distance of around 300 feet, it's about the same as us talking back and forth or moderate street traffic. With the Case 570, it's the same. You can stand on the other side of the pickup while I load you up with hay and talk to somebody on the other side. So the decibels are within range about being the same. It's really not that loud, so.
Next one.
We don't have any lights. We don't have anything set up structure-wise. We like to keep the dark skies, all that good stuff. There's nothing pinpointing us out in the dark. I wanted to go over the height of the stack of hay. As you guys may know, a normal bridge is about 14 feet 9 inches, so these haystacks have to travel on the truck and have to make it underneath the bridges to get down here. So the average height of a stack of hay is 11 feet. That would be 72 bales, which is only brought down with Bermuda. We do not do that with the alfalfa, because it is too heavy. The average height for a stack of alfalfa, which is 64 bales, is only 10 feet, which is shorter than our one-story house. When it comes to headlights, my husband does leave for work at an early time. Like I said, he's driving most of the time. That's his physical office, and he can go over a couple points about the semi.
Yes, so normally during the summertime, I have to leave either late in the evening or early in the morning, just because 100, 100, 100 to 110-degree weather to 120-degree weather isn't really conducive with semi tires and hauling heavy loads, which hay is. Normally, there's 20 to 23 tons on a semi-load of hay. So there is times where I leave at 11:00 at night or 3:00 in the morning, and same as when I get back. Normally, I get back between 2:00 to 4:00 in the morning. What's that? Oh, well, and also, the hay sales that regard the semi is pretty much separate. The hay sales that happen at our property just give my wife the ability to work from home with our daughter. I have my own legitimate company. I have between anywhere 15,000 to 30,000 bales of hay, all at one time. So 30,000 bales, I could double, I could double to six-acre properties with how much hay I have, but I store them at the farm that I buy from in Parker, Arizona, which is normally about an eight-hour drive. So the semis that are on the property, normally I only have two, they only bring the little bit of hay that my wife sells down. All the rest of it is going to ranches in Douglas, El Fida, Amato. Basically, I service all of southeastern Arizona, and then I also send hay out of state. So that's mainly what the semis are used for, is my hay business that really doesn't have anything to do with our property.
Here's some pictures I presented for you. I measured out, which the handy-dandy iPhone, and I also got a tape measure if you really question it. But this is a stack of Bermuda. As you can see, it's 11 feet tall, give or take the 1 inch, and that's straight from the ground. That's not including the pallet. I also measured the distance from the fence line to make sure that we provided that, so that we are not butted up against the property to our west. Okay, ready for the next one? So we do have environmental considerations. Hay is biodegradable, and luckily, most of the hay that's fallen off the stacks, I scrape it up and I actually feed it to my horses, because I sell hay and I am using the scraps. There is no hazardous waste or runoff. There is regular maintaining of the equipment on the property. That is something we do quite often and have to maintain that, because this is moving heavy stuff, needs heavy work, has to work for us, can't be breaking. And it's pretty much accepted with rural agricultural practices. We're not exceeding anything outside of that.
Next one.
So I wanted to go over the zoning use and compatibility. We do need a special use permit. I apologize, they did not teach me that in high school, so I'm working on it now. We're in rural zoning, which allows agricultural practices. This is an agricultural practice. Horses need hay, cows need hay. The land doesn't need to be overgrazed, and if it doesn't start raining soon, it'll be bad. Thank you.
Thank you. We may have questions for you. We'll call you back.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the time for public comment. I do have several forms. The first one is Marisol Otten. Name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Marisol Otten, 8507 East Parlane, Hereford, Arizona. I'm here today to support Nicole and Luke Webb. For a few years, I traveled over two hours, about 120 miles one way to a feed store in Morena, just to get quality feed at a reasonable price. The local options were either too expensive or lacked the quality of the animals deserved. Nicole and Luke initially began getting hay from a family for their own personal use, eventually decided to offer that same quality feed to the community, and it's been a blessing ever since. Now, instead of driving over two hours, I only have to drive 20 minutes to get the same high-quality feed at a fair price. They've helped meet a need with fairness, integrity, and consistency. Their prices have remained low, yet fair, and quality has never changed. They understood firsthand how hard it is to find affordable, reliable feed in our area, and they wanted to make it easier for all of us. Nicole is also a young mother to a one-year-old daughter, and this small business gives her the opportunity to be home full-time while she's still supporting her family. It allows her to balance being a mom with contributing meaningful to the community, meaningfully to the community, and that's something I deeply respect. She's not just running a business, she's building a life that reflects her values and serves others at the same time. What they're doing isn't just a business, it's a genuine service to the community. They've helped countless neighbors, myself included. I know I can count on them, not just for our feed, but as good people who care about this community. In a time when things feel more expensive and harder than ever, it's rare and refreshing to see folks who, folks like Nicole and Luke, step up and give back. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassandra Potts.
Hello, I'm Cassandra Potts. I live at 9022 South Yell Lane. I drive past 10616 East Waters Street on a regular basis, several times a day, often to and from work and to and from town. I am strongly in support of their establishment and their operations of hay sales within our mutual community. This type of business provides essential benefits to the area, both economically and agriculturally. Many residents in our community raise livestock, horses, cattle, goats, and other animals that require steady, affordable supply of hay, myself included. Strengthening the local economy, retail hay sales creates good job opportunities out in our rural community, encouraging local occurrence and support of agricultural supply chain from growers and transporters to end users. It could potentially give jobs to younger kids in the area that are starting out, teach them hard work and values as they grow. I also wanted to add that I have not, as a local, noticed any traffic increase. Their gates are always closed when I pass, for the most part. I rarely ever even see it open. Everything that they do do is by appointment only, and their gates are closed until someone has an appointment to come see them, which I find more traffic obstructions being just people going down to the conservation, going on the hikes, and as I said, I go past that area every single day, and those are the people that are stopped in the roads, if anything. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is Socorro O'Paul. Is this person online?
She wasn't able to attend because of animals. I dropped in.
Okay. Thank you so much. Richard and Denise Rice. Are you online? I don't think so. Their comment is, "I think it will be good for the economy in the area." Jessica Wood.
My name's Jessica Wood. I live at 5155 South Ricardo Drive. I thank you for the opportunity to speak for Nicole and Luke in support. I'm in an interesting position, that I am just a mile away from both Gem's and Al's hay, and I still support Nicole, and there are several reasons behind that. The biggest reason is being that she has been affordable and caring in times that we're a little stressed about feeding everybody. She has, her process has always been to have us contact her personally, and then she will either deliver, because our truck is down, or I'm able to schedule an individual appointment to see her. There was one day out of the several times that I've seen her, that she had been making deliveries all day, and she had three of us show up at once, and that is, she was like, "I'll never do that again." That was a lot. So I do believe that she will stick to her current business pattern. She is in a location that makes sense for the area, out in Palominas. I have many, many families out there with horses, livestock, and they don't always want to come all the way into town. That is the only livestock resource out there in Palominas currently. Her equipment and her noise are all the same things I have as a private horse owner. Maybe the semi is extra, is the separate business, and that is the way they can get it there. But a squeeze, a tractor, even a big tractor, and they make the same amount of noise I do, if not less, because I have teenagers. So I do think that as far as noise to the neighbors, that won't be an issue, as well as traffic with one-on-one. I do believe that this grew out of a need for Nicole to be home with her kids, and that's something that is very close to my heart, or with her kid, kids eventually, maybe. But that's something very close to my heart. I've had to be creative and very forceful to be able to stay home with my kids, and I think that that is the general business. Nothing is going to just implode out there on you guys. So I hope that you guys approve and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Brown.
Hello, I'm Nicole Brown. I live at 4537 South Kino Road, Sierra Vista. I'm also on the same thing. I live approximately three miles from Gem's and Al's feed. However, I do go to Nicole's, where I have Nicole deliver to provide hay for me. With that said, I have livestock and equine animals, and with the way the hay prices were going crazy between the other two feed stores, a lot of us had to consider getting rid of our animals or drastically downsizing. If it wasn't for Nicole and Luke, many of us wouldn't have the animals we have now, because she actually provides affordable hay. With this, I've been at her facility a few times. When I am there, like I said, her equipment is super quiet. I do see traffic, quite a bit of traffic going up and down the road. None of it's going to her house. It's all going to the Bed and Breakfast down the road, or to the natural conservatory, the San Pedro River. And I'm also, I have read some of the rebuttals against her facility. I am a small business owner myself. I own Telltopia, which, as you guys might know, is also in the county, in Sierra Vista. One of the complaints was, "What person doesn't want to grow their business?" Me. I own a business. I own a very successful dog and cat boarding facility. I don't want to grow. I don't want it any bigger. I'm very happy being a small business, because I know my clientele, and I have a connection with my clients that I wouldn't have if I was a big business. And that's the same thing Nicole has. She knows everybody. You know, she also comes to my house, and she delivers at my house. I recently had surgery, and I was on bedrest for 12 weeks. She brought the hay to my house. I didn't have to go outside. I didn't have to do anything. She unloaded the hay with all of my crazy animals and would text me and say it was done. And she'd be like, "Let me know when you need me to come back and help you again." And she also sent me pictures and checked up on my animals when she was back there, because I couldn't even walk outside. And that's not something you get from these other businesses. So I just wanted you to know that I fully, fully support what she's doing. Oh, and the last thing is, I did read a reply about the hay being a fire safety. Anyone who deals with hay knows hay can catch on fire. However, it all comes down to how you stack the hay. And any of us who deal with hay and have animals know, you stack the hay, and you take the temperature of the hay to make sure it doesn't get overheated. I have been to Nicole and Luke's, and I have seen them measuring the temperature between the bales of hay. It just comes down to how you're stacking it, and they know what they're doing. This is their profession. It's not a hay, it's not a fire, a source of worrying about fires. And the hay isn't there long enough to catch fire and catch too much heat. So that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Sir, did you fill out a form?
No, I talked to Mr. Taylor a couple days ago. He gave him some letters, just to review some pictures.
Could you come forward to the microphone, please? What is your name?
Tom Gillum, 8843 South Emerald Lane.
All right, then, I do have your name here, sir. Go ahead. Three minutes.
Okay. These folks are all real nice folks and all, and the only, I really don't care what people do on their property. The only reason I'm in opposition to this at this point is because I've talked to them. They've said they'd work with me and put up a sound barrier wall. That never happened. It's much louder than they say it is, so from my perspective on my property, do you have any pictures, Mr. Taylor, for me?
No, sir. The commission was given a handout of your letter with those photos.
We have them.
Okay. So really, the only opposite, the reason I'm opposing it is because it's much louder than they say, and their center of operations is less than 200 feet from my back door. So not only do I hear it always on the property, but I hear it inside my house, too, all the time. So I submitted a letter and asked for some conditions, that they just move that a little bit further away from my house, and then I'd actually be able to live in peace. But it's much louder than they say, and I don't think that they're aware of how it affects me. So I submitted a letter asking for some conditions to be put on this, so that it can be less of a nuisance to me. And that's it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. We also have a letter from Patrick Dome. Are you online, sir, or in the room? This was also a letter in opposition. Anyone online, Mr. Taylor, that you can see?
Is there anyone online that would like to speak on this docket?
Hearing none. This is the time for the applicant's response. You have five minutes.
So, in response to Tom's noise complaint, the, we did talk about working with them, and this was back in May. I told him, I said, "Over the next few months, I will get a fence up that should eliminate most of the sound." So, that was one of the conditions that we talked about. Him saying that we were not able to work with them on that is false. I know the fire hazard from Patrick Dome, all of the hay that I get, it's moisture-tested, because hay, kind of like manure, it can naturally combust, if the moisture's too high inside the bales. It is all probed, even before it leaves the farm and at my property, to make sure the moisture content is below what it needs to. Because you could be driving down the road, and the bales of hay are baled too wet, and they can naturally combust. No fire, no nothing, though it's naturally combust if the moisture's too high. So, the fire hazard end of it, I don't agree with. I've been around a lot of hay. I've shipped a lot of hay. I've hauled a lot of hay. I've never once came across a bale catching on fire with me. The, go ahead.
Excuse us, sorry, we're trying to find the point. With moving the hay on the property, we were asked by Mr. Gillum to move it to our east end of our property. Unfortunately, our house's septic is in that vicinity. Where it's at right now, Luke is able to drive in, get turned around, and get back straightened out. We try not to park in the back in front of the view of Mr. Gillum's house. The hay itself, I believe Matthew helped us measure it, it was around 300 some odd feet. Also, it is not directly in his line of sight.
As you can see in the picture.
It's visible that his house is further south
To the south.
of our property, and where we keep the hay. I understand the tarps can be a little bit flamboyant, but with the black side out, it gets a little too hot. With the colored side out, it is able to, one, keep the rain off of it, and, two, it's not as hot.
Well, and then also, the point of, just like Nicole said, a small business, the reason I started selling hay down here was due to the prices from the last couple of years of these other feed stores that were price gouging. It was more to bring the prices down for everyday people, because it's tough right now. The economy, it's tough. And so, if you have to choose besides downsizing animals, or being able to find affordable hay, it's kind of the lesser evil. And also, when I started bringing hay down here, my wife, we had just had our daughter, and nowadays, you kind of need a two-income family. So, it was something that she could do, work from home, take care of our daughter, not have to go to a nine-to-five job and find a babysitter, something that she could work from home at. But I don't, I don't want to expand. This is, this is just out of necessity for her and the neighbors surrounding. Like I said, I have my own hay business, where I store the majority of my hay at the farm that I buy it from.
Once again, I am only one person, and I can only do so much in a day. So, Luke was so kind to provide me with the squeeze and everything, so that I wasn't hand-loading the night before for my deliveries, because when I go to an area, I try to make it a day. I could put my daughter in the car seat, I can play some Little Bear, and we can get going down the road. Occasionally, I am able to drop her off with my mother, who is able to watch her, but I have long days. I start as early as I can and get out of there as soon as possible. And for the time being that I'm gone, nothing's happening at the property. You can figure if I run to Sonoyta, I'm gone from 7:00 AM, and if I'm lucky, I get back at 2:00 to 3:00. And maybe I'll have two or three people pick up, if possible. But, that's not always the case, because sometimes I'm so tired, I want to get my daughter, and I want to go inside. I'm doing the best I can and providing what I can, and it's important to me. And thank you, guys.
I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you. The public portion of this hearing is now closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Questions?
I have questions.
Mr. Watkins?
I feel for you. Hay is my business. So, do you have plans of building barns at all? Come on up there.
So, the only thing that I would build would just be a couple portable, portable shades, just built out of pipe, nothing permanent, just as necessity. It doesn't rain much down here, but it does rain, especially over the past couple of weeks. But it's not going to be industrial. It's not going to be a giant warehouse. There's not going to be, like I said, I have enough hay to cover two six-acre properties. It's not, that right there might be semi-load and a half, two semi-loads. I mean, it's not, there's not going to be this big influx of, you know, 20-foot-high storage containers, or barns, or anything like that. Like I said, right now, there's some tarps. I really haven't been home over the past three weeks. I've been hauling hay to a ranch in Amato. But as of right now, until I have a little bit of time, the tarps is what we have to work with.
Tarps are just a pain.
They are a pain.
You're telling me, try climbing up there when it's windy. I haven't flown yet.
And I was going to comment on the fire issue, but you covered it well. The moisture the hay is baled out, or if it sat and got rained on, it's the moisture in the bale.
Yep.
And I know that, so.
Well, and also, that's kind of the reason to have a little bit of equipment. All the equipment, I can move hay. I got plenty of, plenty of spots around there. Even, even if there was a fire hazard, I could move the hay to a safe location, to where it's not going to harm anything.
Sure. That's really all I have there. Sure.
I will have a question or a statement.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for that comment. I will double down and say that I also feel for you, as I have done what you're both doing, myself, for many, is working at home, raising a little boy by myself, trying to get him to school, and then I can work during the day and hustle back to get him, not too far from where you're talking about, actually. I know what that is like, and I know the challenges. I would just think, regarding this whole project, you know, this commission in large encourages people. We want to help Americans be happy and successful for our country and themselves. And I'm very happy with this, and I encourage it. There's only one thing from one of the neighbors who gave these pictures to us. This is the view from his house. Now, we have almost every month here, maybe every other month, a similar issue, somebody wanting to run a small business, or even just storage at their house, construction equipment, tractors, trailers, not even working there, just want to store. But a neighbor thinks that it's not very sightly, and sometimes it's not. But we've always resolved those issues with an agreement to put up a fence. That's all it took, or a nice ablock wall, or something that looks nicer than equipment, right? If I could ask you, on that photo, what kind of fence is that along the road there?
That is just privacy fencing. The front of our property, it's just five-foot chain link, and that's just five-foot privacy screen fencing.
So, regarding your neighbor's concern, have you seen these pictures?
Yes.
If you look closely, you can see me in one of them.
You know, to me, I mean, we try to resolve things, make everybody happy and prosperous and productive. To me, it seems that the solution to that is a taller fence, okay? Not terribly hard to do, I hope?
No. Well, and I know Tom's, some of Tom's complaints was the view of hay from the San Pedro. I mean, my view from the San Pedro, it's, you see the, you see the treetops of the river. You know, if, if, if we really want a good view of the San Pedro, we all should have bought right there in the San Pedro.
We are up against that every month here with the view.
But I know, hey, like I said, hey, it's, it's, it's not like it's an ugly view, and it's, it doesn't block from here, so from the, where that red and blue tarp is right there, at that, that kind of divider fence.
In the corner?
Yes. His house is, well, probably the edge of his house, another 50 or 60 feet to the south, and then obviously on his side of the property. So, that hay doesn't necessarily even block his view of the river from his back door.
Can I ask you, then, from what perspective are these photos taken? What are, what are the trees here?
That's from walking up. That's, and that's a zoomed-in, that's from walking up and taking a picture of it, because you can see, that's his back door right there.
Okay.
So, so where the hay is at, I mean, that's, that's not even in view from his back door of the river.
So, I'll repeat, the successes we've had at this commission in similar proposals in Cochise County were just a visual, okay? Not that you can't do it, or the person, it's just a visual. Try to make it look nicer for that person, everybody's happy. And it seemed to be
Oh, I plan to put up a fence, believe me.
I hope it is, yeah. And then, then, no issues, you know? I was going to ask about fire and water. Do you have some kind of water source?
I've got water trailers and pumps. That's kind of the equipment. The case that we've got, it's a Gannon tractor, it's got a front bucket on it. Dirt pits out hayfires pretty dang good.
And you can move stuff around.
Yep.
And then, the last question is about pest and odors and critters, rodents, is that an issue?
It's not. No, the hay's on pallets, it, there's normally not very many bugs or rodents that's really attracted to hay. The only time you'll get, you know, say rabbits, or mice, or squirrels, or anything like that, is when you got the hay flat on the ground, they'll burrow underneath it. But with the way the hay is on pallets, it's not an issue.
Just get some holes, right?
Yep.
It also moves fast enough. It's not there long enough to get friends. The poor quail were trying to set up nests in some of the hay bales, and they felt bad as they scooped their eggs up and tried putting them in the incubator.
Well, I say, I do relate to you. I understand what you're doing, and I know the challenges of that lifestyle. And I want you to be happy and healthy and successful in it. I would like to accommodate the neighbor with a visual block of some kind, if you can work that out. I don't know that this commission has anything to say further about that, but I think it would go a long way. And that's all I'm going to say today.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Mr. Limbach, do you have any questions for applicant?
No matter what.
Thank you. I do, if you'll stay. How many semis are coming and going? Give me a sample week.
It's only my semi. Everything is owned by me, so it's not like there's random semis coming in and out. It's my semi that I own. Maybe bringing hay to the house, maybe once a week.
Once a week?
Yeah. Like I said, I leave early in the morning to go haul hay. The last two weeks, I've been gone hauling hay to a ranch that, after this hearing, I've got to get in a car and drive eight hours to Mexico to help that ranch, ranch 600 head of calves. But normally, normally to the house, about one semi-load a week, give or take.
But are you coming home and parking your semi every single day?
No. Most of the time when I'm gone, I'm, I'm out for three or four days at a time.
Okay. But that is your home base?
Yes, yes, yes. That is my home base.
And then, for staff, what's the limit on that road for weight?
Madam Chair Commissioners, speaking with the engineering folks, it is a chip-sealed road, and it would be expected to withstand a 40-ton truck. If there was damage to the road, that would be something that the engineering department would go out and look at, and possibly contact whoever was causing the damage.
Sure. All right, thank you. Do you exceed that limit, sir?
Yes, yeah, I'm well within the 40-ton limit. That is the ADOT limit as well. That is the amount you're legally allowed to haul.
All right. And how long have you been running this hay business at your property?
I've had hay there about a year, and some of the hay also goes to some of the kettle that I've got in Douglas, Arizona. So, some of it is for hay sales. The excess amount goes to the hay sales, but the majority goes to the kettle that I've got.
And what is the status of your complaint? Your, your compliance, your code-compliance complaint?
Is that the one from Dora?
Yes, yes.
So, she recommended that we cease all activities until the hearing. Unfortunately, I tried to minimize as much as I could on the property, and I still have to go out and feed our cows every other day, so it's kind of, it's hard to stop what I'm doing, because I still have things to do, if that makes sense.
Okay. Where does that leave the county?
Our formal enforcement is on hold. They were advised to cease activity until
To apply for the special use? Okay.
Until potential approval with this commission.
Yeah, okay. All right. And then, Matthew, could you put the conditions of approval on the screen? So, one of the conditions if we approve today is that you build that screening. What is your target date?
The county right away, the, into the
Number three? If you read number three?
Oh, number three?
Your outside storage areas shall be screened using a solid wall.
I can get it up within a couple of weeks. I have to set posts in the ground and put the screen fence up, but
Because we would need that compliance, as Mr. Montgomery pointed out.
I'd probably say within
This is the way to neighborhood peace.
A month at the latest, three weeks. Is that the fencing that we're talking about, that would be approved, is the privacy screen fencing? Okay, how tall do we need it?
Mr. Taylor?
Madam Chair, I believe that the height limit for fencing in rural districts, I believe it's eight feet. That wouldn't be enough to fully obscure it. However, the applicant, if they wanted to go a little higher than that, they could apply for a variance with the Board of Adjustment.
It is eight feet.
Thank you.
But even eight feet would go a long way toward obscuring that view, that view shed.
Could I put hay as my view? I mean, is hay a non-permanent fence?
That does not sound correct to me. Screened using a solid wall or fence, not
What's that?
Well, you know
That's what I, it was more of a, the fence, the screen, if I'm only allowed eight feet, the stack of hay is 10, if they want to put the screen.
Can I render an opinion?
Mr. Montgomery, please do, I'm at a loss.
I know that eight feet is the standard limit on a fence without a variance in Cochise But those are easy to get, but if you have an eight-feet, say, chain link or something, field fence, with even the fabric that we saw in the front road, that, that type of fence has been an issue in this Board of Supervisors in recent months, in Sierra Vista and elsewhere. It is completely acceptable. And Dora, who I know, and is very efficient in her work, and also quite adamant about her work, but she has no choice but to accept that kind of offense, and has done that before in Palominas, in Sierra Vista, in Herbert, I know these places. So, even that kind of offense is acceptable. And in my thinking, if your hay is 10 feet high, I'm okay with that. I don't think it's an eyesore, that's just me talking, but it looks better than these pictures by a lot, okay? That would be a big improvement to some of these photos here. Now, again, I'm just one guy here with this opinion, but I have experience. The supervisors would be the ultimate judges of that, if anything were to be appealed to them, okay? But I know how they've judged before, and it's in favor of that fencing.
Okay. So, so 10 feet would be okay to cover? That would mean that would block the hay?
You would have to get a variance for a 10-foot fence, since eight is the county limit.
Eight foot, okay. Okay, that was, eight feet would suffice.
And in my opinion, eight feet is enough. If you have two feet of hay above that, I can personally live with that. If you have two feet of hay above that, I can personally live with that. But I don't live next to you. So, you know, again, if you can resolve things with your neighbors who do live next to you, everything is much better. And we handle this about every other month, don't we? Some kind of visual? So maybe you could have a chat.
Thank you.
I just, Madam Chair, I really think you need to clarify what type of fence you're talking about. I believe what we're discussing is a chain-link fence, which would be eight feet high, and that if I looked at your pictures correctly, you have used shade cloth to cover your fence in the front. If not, I think that that's probably an appropriate covering for an eight-foot fence, is to use some type of shade cloth. You might agree with your neighbor as to what color it could be, because I just purchased, was purchasing a large piece of shade cloth, and you can get it in quite a variety of colors. So, and it really blocks a lot of you, it, pretty well too. And it's not as expensive as putting up a block wall.
Mr. Watkins?
I, you touched on something that was running through my mind, and it would act as a sound barrier too. Fine, three-by-four bales, put them three high along the fence, it'll be a sound barrier, a sight barrier. They'll eventually deteriorate, but put sedan in there or something. That's my opinion, but I don't know if the county's going to go for that.
That's...
We actually, we actually asked Matthew about it, and Dora, when we were told that there was nothing that said we couldn't, and it would not be a permanent fix, it would be a temporary fix to mitigate the noise and help with that issue. Also, there was a complaint about, like, my ATV, because I put my daughter in the ATV, and we'd go back and feed the horses. I don't like being stared at while I'm feeding my animals and doing stuff at my property. I prefer to, you know, go back there, turn my lights on, feed my horses, that's facing the opposite direction, and be left alone as well.
Because I live in the area where there's gas engines for pumps, and people stack hay around them all the time.
So, because that's, in that, that far stack in between the little divider fence, that's what's there is alfalfa three-by-fours. There's alfalfa three-by-fours, and vermette three-by-fours, and then small bales of both. But no, it's, I had, that's one thing I've got, is I've got a lot of three-by-fours.
And like I said, we talked to Dora about it, and we talked to Matthew about it, and there was nothing that said for a temporary fix.
And even if I had to put the shade cloth up against the hay, that would kind of eliminate some of the look, and that would eliminate the sound. So if that's something that could be considered, that's more than, more than fine to me.
The county's not going to blow it over.
No, maybe they're not going to blow over.
Chair lady?
Mr. Montgomery.
So I am hearing an absolute desire and willingness to comply with wishes in the neighborhood, and work together in a friendly fashion with the neighbors, and that is a good thing to hear. Is, is the, is your business on hold right now through Dora?
She, yeah, she recommended that we cease.
Okay. I would like this commission to approve your application here immediately, with the fencing to come sooner than later, maybe starting right away.
As soon as he gets back.
But not to hold you back from your business.
Well, and if we can agree on that three-by-four, and I put the shade cloth, I mean, I could have that quick.
Okay, there you go, see?
So I'm, I'm more than willing to go that route. That's honestly the quickest way for me. I've got the hay, I've got the equipment to move it, and like I said, if I put the shade cloth up against it, that kind of, if you don't like the look of hay, it kind of deters that, so...
I'd rather look at hay than deteriorating shade cloth.
I think we have the same agreement on that.
Six and one half dozen in the others, I see.
Madam Chair, I do have a question about number four, the condition number four. All right, if you're going to Parker, what time do you start in your truck in the morning?
So, during the summertime, if, so during the summertime right now, I've been driving empty during the day and hauling at night. So I've been leaving at my house at about seven to eight in the morning. I get to Park, Arizona at between 3:30 to 4:30. I get loaded, I drive during the night, and I get home between four to five. Wintertime, it just really depends, like this heat, it's kind of been, the scheduling has kind of been changing.
So I guess my point is that you're outside the realm of the 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, just with the truck. Which, you know, starting a truck up can be noisy, I understand, I have them, they, they are noisy. And you show up at three in the morning, you're tired, you want to get home. I'm sure, I'm sure you're not using a brake on Waters Road, but it can sound like a brake if you're downshifting and stuff. So I'm just, I, I don't know where the workaround is on that.
Well, and that, the semi really, like I said, that's just me coming home from work. Most of the time, if I'm hauling hay to the house, it's during the daytime to be able to unload it. Me showing up home at night is just me getting home from hauling hay from somewhere else.
Which is no different than, than somebody parking their work truck. Like, there's tons of people that drive semis for service vehicles and everything like that. It's no different than somebody pulling into their house. The lights are no brighter, they're no higher, a truck's headlights are higher than the semis.
And also, normally when I turn onto Waters Road, I'm in second gear, which is about eight miles an hour, as I putt down Waters Road to my house.
He's really going to take that corner.
I might suggest, Commissioner, that until further notice, it is no hung, no foul. If there are no complaints, there are no complaints. Well, the neighbor did have a noise complaint, that's why I brought it in. He was concerned, I understand that, but all these other efforts have been made... But I think the hay wall is all the one.
Yeah, that would, that would eliminate basically all of the noise.
The hay is awesome, because you can, you'll have a stack, like, three stacks, the noise, you can't hear the other person on the other side, I'm telling him, "Tie the tarp down." What?
It, it blocks the noise pretty good. So I'm, I'm more than okay with that. I can, like I said, I get back from New Mexico Saturday evening, and I can start on that beginning of next week.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Yes, thank you.
Are we finished, Commissioners?
I believe we are. Chair lady?
All right. Mr. Taylor, your summary and recommendation.
Madam Chair, prior to reading the recommendations, based on the concerns about the hours for the business, would the commission prefer to strike the hours 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM?
You know, I'm going to say something controversial, but his truck is his coming-and-going vehicle, unless he's, I mean, we're walking a fine line. Is he running his business with that truck, or is that truck is coming and going? My husband's Harley is probably really disturbing at 3:00 AM. So I'm not sure what to do with this.
I think here it would be for people coming to get three or four bales. And I feel for you on that, too.
But your stated hours in your application are fewer than those.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's for people picking up hay, you know, when I'm, like I said, during the heat, my hours kind of change for me coming home, but as far as people coming to pick up hay...
That stays within those hours.
Yes.
Sure, yeah. And that's where I think number four is designed.
Mr. Watkins, shall we delete number four? I think it's a safety net.
Yeah, I think if we leave it there, it'd be fine.
I believe it would be proper to eliminate that one. I really do.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I'm kind of there. Can I ask, who picked those hours? Where did those hours come from?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Montgomery, those were based on some of my conversations with the applicant, and the hours of operation are specific to the appointment pickups. They really weren't designed or intended to apply to any of the vehicle traffic.
As long as the applicant's okay with these hours, I don't see a reason to delete them yet.
I don't want to get up any earlier than I already do.
This is a major endeavor that these folks are embarking on, and I believe all the good reasons for it are good reasons. That, for that one little thing to be a hang-up of it, we're not, that wouldn't be right, so...
I'm going to recommend we leave it as written, unless anyone really objects.
Everybody good with that?
Mr. Watkins?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I live within a quarter mile of the railroad track. Over the last five years, we went from having not too many freight trains go through town to, and I mean, this is where the crossing is, I hear the horn go off all the time. And we now have multiple freight trains going through, and you know what? Nobody cares with the railroad whether we like the sound or not, they just keep putting those trains right on through town. It's something, sometimes you just have to put up with some things. I don't even hear them anymore.
So you're okay with leaving number four as written?
Yep.
All right, thank you for that.
Call for a question.
Mr. Taylor, did you make your summary yet?
Right now, Madam Chair. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 2513 to allow retail, retail hay sales business, subject to the following conditions. A county right-of-way permit is required. Internal driveways and parking and loading areas shall be treated with two-inch gravel or other stabilizing material to reduce dust. Outside storage areas shall be screened using a solid wall or fence supplemented with native vegetation. And again, we would identify those as basically two options, either a solid wall or a fence with some vegetation, although we have the screening option as a third option at this point. Business activities are allowed seven days per week with hours between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Standard conditions related to conditions permitting and modifications still apply to this application. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The motion is on the floor and seconded. It is time for the vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye to approve.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Markowski?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Congratulations, thank you for your hard work. Any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00, or online at cochise.AZ.gov.
Thank you guys for your time.
Very good. Best to you.
This was the final item on our agenda. This is the time for the Planning Director's Report. Ms. McLaughlin?
This was a very long meeting. We will have a very long meeting coming up next month as well. Thank you. We're going to have three rezonings for special uses. We're going to hold off on the text amendments until September, given the already long schedule. The SR 174 amendment that the board recommended last meeting was approved by the Board of Supervisor. It will go into effect at the end of the month.
Hold on. Folks, could you talk in the lobby, please, for continuing our meeting? Could not hear you, sorry. Thank you.
All right, so, thanks. Long meeting, long meeting, probably in September it will be long as well. So thank you for hanging in there and for processing those so efficiently. It's only 6:30, so that's great. On a more personal side, Matthew was promoted to Planning Manager, so congratulations to him. And we're recruiting a new planner for our department. So, that's all I have, unless there's something from you guys. Anyone?
I just have a question on the format of doing the motion. I understand Robert's rules and all that. If we get to a point where we feel we need to amend that motion, then do we do that right before the vote, or...
Yes, we take a separate vote on the amendment proposed.
Right, have to do that and do a vote.
So we'll kind of like do that within...
And vote on the motion as amended. Okay. Robert's rules, I like Bob's rules better.
Is the feedlot coming up anytime soon?
We have gotten the application.
So much opposition, stories out there.
A lot.
That's going to be a bad one.
You may not even get her.
No, if he doesn't make his application, if he goes to a different county.
And I'll tell you details you may not know afterwards.
All right. Do I hear motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded and adjourned.